Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bladens?
Aye.
Chair Piszczakowski?
Aye.
Five six ayes.
Okay, next item is closed meeting. Do we have a, well, let me read this. Be it resolved in Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Number one project 2020-005, number two project 2020-014. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings from staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. The consultation with the legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. Number one, Christian Scholar Network versus County of Montgomery. Next, discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, being the Parks and Rec Commission. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second if you would call the roll.
Ms. Bladens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Piszczakowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We are in closed session.
Okay, is there a motion to come out of closed station?
Some moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Bluthers.
Aye.
Chair Mr. Kaski.
Aye.
All right, do we have a motion to certify the closed meeting?
Some moved.
Second. Motion and a second, take your choice. Madam Secretary, is there any discussion? Now therefore be it resolved that the board supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Madam Secretary, call roll.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Bluthers.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Mr. Kaski.
Aye.
So.
All right, if our county administrator would go ahead and lead us in invocation and pledge.
If we could let us stand please for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead everyone in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Okay, first item, presentations, recognitions, and awards.
We have the year end. Thank you very much. This evening, we have Angie Hill, our Director of Finance, with us to give us an update on tentatively how we finished fiscal year 2020. Angie, I'll recognize you.
Well, thank you guys for having me tonight. Usually, we bring several resolutions to you that are kind of standard carried forward resolutions for purchase orders and ongoing projects, but we decided that because of the current state of everything, we would give a brief presentation tonight about where we ended our year based on our revenues, and then next meeting, we'll have those typical carryovers. And these amounts, we're 13 days into the fiscal year, so we feel comfortable with them, but they could change a little bit, and of course, they haven't been audited at this point. But I do have good news to share with you tonight. And probably Mark would be doing this, but he's on vacation riding his motorcycle out in Wilderness, so he has entrusted it to me. If you remember in January, he made a presentation to you that talked about how we anticipated finishing the fiscal year as far as revenue was concerned, and if you look at this chart at the far right-hand side, that shows what the estimates were at that point. We estimated that we would finish the year with about $3.6 million in revenue above what we had projected in the budget. Then COVID hit, but we are still extremely fortunate and blessed to have collected almost $2 million more than we had anticipated with the budget. You can see in the third column over that says difference, that's the difference between our budget and what we actually collected. So we did collect less real estate tax than we anticipated, but we expected that would be the case. We think we're going to catch up in the next couple months, and we'll be right on track with that. That would just be a timing issue, we think. Then, delinquent penalty and interest is less than we estimated it would be in January. Again, due to the COVID, we were not pursuing that in the same manner as we might have been otherwise. And one good note is that while sales tax didn't come in quite as high as we thought it would, it still did come in above budget by $273,000, so we did very well. The schools also had an overall increase of about a half million dollars. I've broken this down into two parts. You can see the top part has a subtotal of a deficit of $441,000. That mostly is because the ADM was lower than they projected when they did the budget, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a minute, but that came in a little lower. Federal funds and other local funds, a large portion of that at the bottom of the page comes from Medicaid and some local sources of funding that they normally get right at the end of the year, and then we do usually allow them to carry that over into the next year. But overall, they did well too. Again, this is just preliminary, and while we did not meet what we thought we would in January, we still, the general fund still finished $2 million higher than the estimates, and the schools were about a half a million dollars more. I spoke with Tommy Krantz today, and he said that the March ADM numbers were not extremely far off. It was 9,762 compared to a budgeted 9,802, so that was pretty close. And both the general fund and school operating fund expenditures were under budget for the I'm sure that you guys remember that we set aside in the budget deferred some items until we see what happens with the first quarter or so of revenue and just see how things stabilize. There's talk about a special session of the General Assembly that we believe will be in August to address revenue projections. We also need to keep monitoring sales tax because there is a lag in that, and we don't know how that's going to affect us completely. Personal property, the book will be done around the end of August or first of September, so those values will be significant, and we don't know what's going to happen with that because car sales obviously are down, so those values might not grow. School enrollment is a big question. We don't know what kind of ADM we'll have. We don't know what's going to happen with the schools, so that could have a big impact on their funding, and then other categories that we can't even predict. So we're still going to wait a little while longer before we make any more recommendations about changing the budget, but we did just want to let, you know, that we finish the year in a good place. That's all I've got.
Okay, well, we'll go around, see if anybody has any questions. Supervisor Bluthers, do you have any questions?
With the schools, and you might not be able to answer this, that might be something from Mr. Krantz, but are they expecting with, I've heard talk of people wanting to do online or homeschool, and of course, that would cut the enrollment a lot for their funding. Any types of projections?
He said it was presumed to say.
Okay.
Yes, they are talking about that, but he said he really doesn't have a projection yet.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Supervisor King.
Have no question, but thank you and Mark and your whole staff for what you're doing. Thank you.
Supervisor Demoss.
I don't have any questions, but thanks very much for all that you do, and I think that in light of what has happened, what we projected in January with this very unforeseen pandemic, it's, I think it's really great that we're still able to say that we're going to finish a little bit above, not quite where we thought, but you guys really do great work. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
I had a question kind of pertaining to the same one Sherry had. Is there not going to be some, and you probably won't know this, and I don't know that anybody can answer, but like for the ADM, will they not be allowed to use those if they can't go to school? The ones that are being taught online?
I think that if they're taught online, they're still considered enrolled and would count. I don't know exactly how that all will work, but if they have to do online, I believe that would still count.
But not homeschooled, probably?
No, what?
Not homeschooled, probably, if people are like to homeschool.
If they just do homeschool, right, but if they're doing online school through the county?
Right.
Yes.
They would be counted?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
Because actually, the last count was in March when they were not in school, well, not physically in school.
Right.
Supervisor Biggs.
I can comment a little bit on that.
The Superintendent's Association is really concerned. They want the ADM number to remain as it was the last year. They're really scared that as they go into this year, that the ADM number might not be as high, you know, due to circumstances. If it's not as high, then that could mean layoffs. And so there's been a push, and we're going to have another task force call in tomorrow to talk. This will be one of the things that we probably talk about. And so they have sent a letter to the governor, and they're trying to, the Superintendent's Association trying to advocate to keep that number the same because they don't want to lose any funding. I don't know if that helps or not, but that's what they're saying. They are very concerned about it. So I just wanted to thank you for all your work too, and to let you all know that on that call last Wednesday, I think it was the VACO VML Board members with the governor, one of the things he did say were the state revenue is actually looking better than they thought. And so they're doing the same thing you are. They're looking at it, but, you know, very carefully and cautiously. And so hopefully, more information will come out about that too. So thanks for all you guys did, it's really good.
Vice Chair Bone, do you have any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you, Angie, and your staff, for doing all the work.
Thank you.
Yeah, as I recall, Angie, Mark had a crystal ball when he would come for us, be able to answer those questions, but any rate, it sounds like you're bringing us news that we were really, really hoping for, not expecting, but hoping for, so that's really well. And we do appreciate you and your folks working as hard as they do on that to get that information.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item is public address. I do not have anyone here signed up for public address, but if you would like to come forward and speak, you will have four minutes. Need to give your name and address. Seeing no one coming forward, I am going to close public address. Addendum.
No addendum this evening, Mr. Chair.
We have no addendum. Items of consent, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Chair McCaskey.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Okay, next item is old business, rezoning Oak Forest mobile home community.
Mr. Chair, this was, the board held the public hearing on this request at your last meeting, and this is a carryforward from that regarding the proposed rezoning.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair McCaskey.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item is the special use permit for Oak Forest mobile home community.
Again, Mr. Chair, this was heard in public hearing at your last meeting, and this is a carryover from that public hearing.
Is there a motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and is there any discussion on this? All right, no discussion. Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair McCaskey.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
All right, we move to new business, ordinance amending Chapter 1, Section 1 through 6 Code of Montgomery, increased courthouse security fee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Chair McCaskey.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item is the amendment to the county's personnel policies and procedures.
Mr. Chair, this is to reflect the paid caregiver leave that we discussed at previous board meeting. We went back after the presentation that the HR director made and made some additional modifications to the proposal based on the discussion we had that night, and you have a resolution before you to adopt paid caregiver leave as a policy of the county.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'd just like to say one thing. I do appreciate the staff working on this. I know ever since we put the childcare in place, I'm not going to say aye, but we have been working on this, and I do appreciate that it finally has come to pass.
And I would like to say thank you to Supervisor King for bringing this to our attention and pushing it because it's, I think, something that is needed, and I think it just goes to assist our employees that look after us every day, and we need to take care of them also. Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair McCaskey.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Did I miss somebody?
I think everyone said something.
Did you have your hand up?
For what?
To say something on the last motion.
Well, I was, pretty much what Todd said, I was really glad that we got it done, and I was glad that it has flexibility, I think, in number 11 where, you know, if you have an emergency, you don't have to go 30-day.
Yeah.
You know, I had, when I first read that, I was like freaking out, and then I saw how it was resolved, so it looks really good.
Okay. All right, next item is the CDBG funding, neighbors in need project. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on it? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Chair McCaskey.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item, advertised intent to amend Montgomery County Code for the animal license.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would like to say something. I'm assuming this came from our treasurer, and I wanted to clarify that before I said what I was going to say. This is a result of a conversation that I had with our treasurer about the burden that the current process places on citizens for annual registration for a very small amount of money. And it places a burden not only on residents, but also from a paperwork administrative type end. And so this is an attempt to kind of make the process less cumbersome. I really, really appreciate our treasurer being willing to look into this and circling back and bringing this forward. I'm looking forward to hearing from the community what kind of reflections they have because I think this really resolves some of the complaints that I've received from our citizens.
Yes, and I would also add that it's nice to have another option, and I think making something more convenient certainly can't hurt. Anybody else? Madam Secretary?
It's called customer service.
There you go, customer service. Madam Secretary, call a roll for us, please.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Chair McCaskey.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
All right, the last item under, what are we in, old business, new business, is a resolution to a outstanding gentleman I've had the pleasure of working with for several years. It's a resolution of appreciation for L. Allen Al Bowman, someone who has done a whole lot of work for the citizens of this county and really put himself out there in his expertise, and it's been well appreciated. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Is this one of those kind of resolutions where we're going to actually invite him to receive it?
I hope so.
We certainly can.
I think that would be very important because he has served so long, he's been on the airport forever, and then, you know, with what he's done there, I mean.
We will make sure we take care of that, yes, ma'am.
We'll just have to check his beach schedule.
Yeah, well, we have to check with his wife.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Any other comments? Madam Secretary.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Chair McCaskey.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
All right, now we get to the most interesting part of every night, and that is reports. And we start with our county attorney.
No reporters.
What?
I guess you all talked out, huh?
I am, yes.
All right, our county administrator.
Sir, I have a few things this evening. First off, ask you to please continue to keep Ms. Judy Kaiser in your thoughts and prayers. Judy's still in the hospital, but we will continue to provide you updates as we get them on Judy. But July has been a very interesting month to the new fiscal year so far. That was an unexpected challenge. We are meeting, talking about the CARES Act funds and how to get those distributed. We will have a work session with the board on July 27th to share with you where we are from a staff perspective of those funds and what we are thinking and to get your input as well. Want to thank Marty in particular. Marty has been reading over the information in terms of, all of staff has, but we look to Marty because as we begin to talk about what we can use the funds for, we want to make sure we're not putting ourselves in a position that could be a challenge later on. So appreciate the guidance on that. Also, the other big item of focus is broadband. We received four proposals last week for broadband partners to work on various projects. They are all wireless providers, so we're very anxious to review those. We've set up a committee to review the proposals, and we hope to have a report to you on July 27th as to next steps with that process as well. We did send a letter to DHCD indicating that we are planning to apply for a body grant this year, Virginia Association of Telecommunications grant, so we're looking to move that forward as well. So a lot going on right now. Was very pleased with Angie's report tonight. We were very hopeful that the year into June 30th would be still good. It turned out okay. We've been very blessed in Montgomery County that we have not had to lay anyone off, and we've been able to continue with our essential services as we go through the next three months. However, we'll keep a close watch, and hopefully, by the time we get to September, October, we can have a very close review to see where we are with a number of those items that we deferred to take action on as part of the budget. Mr. Chair, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. We'll go ahead and go around to our board. Supervisor Shepherd.
I have no report, thank you.
Supervisor Blevins.
I just wanted to mention the Department of Social Services that Mr. Larry Lindsey will be retiring, and we were in the process of interviewing for that director position, and we just wanted, I just want to thank him and all the workers of the Department of Social Services for all that he have done through this pandemic, and just appreciate how they have cross-trained to come together to serve our citizens. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor King.
You went down there long when Larry left, what'd you do to him? I don't have no report, but I do have a question. I would like for us to have an extended work session on our projects that we have going, and I would like to also invite Thomas Litten to the extended work session. I'm not pushing, but I'd like to see it next week. I know it's too quick, but I would like to see it very soon. I know myself and some supervisors have some questions that we'd like to get answered, so if we could do it as soon as possible, that would be good.
We could try to schedule it after the 27th because we're really stacked up with this CARES Act stuff, but we will do it as soon as we can.
Are we done with that coronavirus 19 yet? Maybe first part of next month then?
Absolutely, we can do it within 30 days for sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Biggs.
I was just going to report that we did have the VACO regional meeting on June 24th, and April and I and Sherry and Craig were able to be on it. I don't know if there was anyone else from our board on it or not, but we were able to advocate again for broadband and flexibility of spending the CARES Act money, but then again, there just seems to be this question, we keep hearing two different stories about you can spend the money, the CARES Act money on broadband.
But it can't be ongoing.
Yeah, and so I'm still confused about it, and we're still trying to get it clarified. I don't know, the advisor to the governor said that we could spend it, but the day before, the governor said it had to be late, so I'm just really confused. I don't know if you have clarification or not, Marty.
Yeah. I think, I think the distinction is with broadband is if you're going to spend money on it, it has to serve a population right now. And so what I mean is you can't spend CARES Act to build your infrastructure to serve somebody a year from now or two years from now. And so the best way to think about that is if you're trying to maybe get virtual learning because of school or health now is going virtual, and you have, you identify a area of the county where they don't have it, if you could bring there and serve them within that by the end of the year, then I think you're okay to do that.
Would that include?
You can't build up your infrastructure to serve later.
Okay, and that would include like people trying to work from home?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It would be anyone who's associated, who's been affected by this COVID, which would be school, health, or virtual, working virtually, yeah.
So if you.
You need to identify, I think, identify a part of the community that needs it and go after that and make sure they get it before the end of the year.
So if we have our act together, we should be able to use the CARES Act money to do something to help in this. Okay, that would be great.
And I believe, didn't the governor, didn't he, didn't his group specify the hotspots? That we could put those hotspots because you could put them in quickly, and they're basically temporary.
And the schools have actually used some of their funding they received for that very thing.
So that's something that we definitely would want to look at as we are working on our infrastructure, that's for sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine, I just had that question. So we're going to have, what's been going on is the VACO board and the VML board having bi-weekly calls with the governor and different, you know, folks from his administration and cabinet. And then tomorrow, like I think I referred to earlier, we're going to have the VACO VML Task Force, COVID Task Force call, and so this will probably come up again in that. And we'll just keep pushing for this flexibility and whatever else you want us to push for. I know that the schools are really concerned, you know, there's concern about PPE running out during the school year. You know, like, some of that money, do we stockpile that, or what do we do, you know? I think this is a concern all over, and the issue of childcare keeps coming up in these discussions about what do folks do with their children when their children aren't on the schedule to go to school, so we just keep pushing these issues. Is there anything else you want me to push tomorrow?
That's great.
Sounds like you covered everything.
Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Demonts.
No report, Mr. Chair.
I guess because there's no biscuits to serve.
There are no biscuits to serve, no fish fries, which is a real, yeah, it's a huge bummer, but you can't have hundreds and hundreds of people crammed into picnic shelter. It's just, there's no way to do it.
Drive-through.
Yeah, drive-through.
I don't know how you, the volunteers though, that have to make all the food, there's no way to save them.
I just made the suggestion, so it's for you to work it all out.
All right, I'll suggest it. Drive-through fish fry.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bone?
No report.
Well, I have a question. Did you visit the No Name Restaurant on the Wharf? I thought of it.
What was the No Name Restaurant we talked about?
It's some of the best clam, fish chowder in all of New England.
Oh, I, I think it's a lot for the app.
Well, that sounds like a good alternative. Thank you. I really don't have anything to add other than the fact that I think we are doing as a county very well under the circumstances that we've been placed in. Our employees have stepped up and are doing an outstanding job and have been doing an outstanding job. I just, I, as Mr. Meadows had stated, that I think we are really blessed to be in this